Let's draw the horse who bites in order, as always, let's draw the black and white. All right, thank you. We do have a forum. Before we do the forum, Ms. Foster is joining us electronically. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Foster advised you today that you should be unable to be physically present for this meeting due to a personal matter. For the record, please note that the member is participating from the go-to meeting. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 2.4.F of the Madison County Board of Supervisors' Bylaws and Rules of Procedure, I move to conduct this meeting electronically in compliance of Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and confirm that a quorum of the board is physically present and adequate arrangements have been made for the voice of the member to be heard by all persons in this room.
Exactly.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, six folks saying aye.
Aye.
Same song. Yeah, what? Ms. Foster, you hear us? She's muted.
Mr. Chairman, I believe she needs to vote on this. If only it test the technology.
Amber, can you hear us? Vote yea or nay if you'd like to be included in this meeting. Nothing yet, Amber. What about typing it in the chat? While we resolve some of these technical difficulties, can we wait, can we move forward and see if she comments or votes?
I think it may be prudent to wait this time.
Good.
I wouldn't wait an hour, but.
More than a half hour.
All right. Yeah, let's say it again. Yes, please.
Let's check at 1:00 AM.
Ah, good, yeah. You got some rattle, some things you want to read or what? Ah, no, all right. No, we can't hear you. Yes, she voted. She wants to be part of the meeting. There you go. All right, now we're moving in the right direction. Um, no, we can't hear you, Amber. All right, if you're on the go-to meeting and you have children in the background, please mute your line. Livingston, you checked this yet?
Check which one?
Apparently there's some children that are playing in the background.
Sometimes they're at where they come across. Caller two, caller two, maybe?
We really have this tech one down. All right, we do need to adopt an agenda. We have some additions to it. On the consent agenda, we need to add B through F. D is the bond outlays of $7,756.39. Supplemental 21-13, which is the errors act carried forward. Supplement 2114, registrar's absentee ballot refund, that's the D. E is supplement 21-15, IT reimbursed employee for lightning damage. L is supplement 21-16 sheriff's COVID-19 grant. Dollar values attached to those, also under four with the constitutional officers, county departments, committees, and organizations. We're going to talk to Ms. Frye about committee vacancies, that'd be A. D will be common law attorney, funding request for the new position. C, economic development and co-working agreement, rental and more building. D is finance appropriations resolutions for September 2020 capital fund. And E is the county administrator's report on progress towards achievement of board goals. Also, I believe we have a lot of people here, or several people here, that want to talk about the Leather's Lane deal that we have as seven. We put them as right underneath the discussion for, I'm doing before or after the boys and girls club. Let's do them before. That sounds fairly reasonable. Anybody else have anything you want to add to this agenda? Oh, anything else? All right, let's put it on board.
I approve as a measure.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, six folks saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. As always, public comment. Public comment. Nick McDowell.
I have here a copy of the EOP and most recent issue, September 17th. I know also that the board is going to consider negotiations with the rescue squad in closing session. Like that, I'd like to talk about a few comments. Board supervisors creating department of emergency services that legally altered the relationship between county and rescue squad. That relationship had previously been defined by a series of memorandum, understanding. I believe that that vehicle is no longer appropriate. Think the county needs to approach the squad as a contractor that provides certain specified services to and on behalf of the county. Those services need to be spelled out in a statement of work that is offered to the squad. I note in great interest that the terms currently at play in the negotiations we're considering recognize that equities of both parties appear to me very fair. They reduce the risk of vicarious liability to the county based on potential causes of action by the squad. They establish clear operational EMS leadership, all of which I think are really outstanding proposals. Based on the foregoing, I recommend that the board of supervisors abrogate the current MOUs and offer a services contract with the squad consistent with the terms currently proposed by the county. Thank you.
Joe. Other public comment?
I'm Joe May from Edwin. I thought this Leather's Lane had been dissolved years ago. And if this is now a reduction, then why do we have any business maintaining roads that the state doesn't have any control over? I can't even get my state-owned road in Whippleville paved for at least another two years. Every month, more gravel, more road scraping. It never gets any better. My other point is, this Boys and Girls Club, you've already got one charity, that's the Rescue Squad. So why are you going to adopt another charity? And what I don't really understand is, if the public schools want to open, then what's the point of Boys and Girls Club? And if they open, then why don't the public schools? Okie doke, and it seems to be like some people in Culpeper gave them a big chunk of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Other public comment? All right, hearing none. Now, the public hearing, or anybody on the CBO making a whole lot of comments?
No, sir.
Amber says she can hear them. Thank you. We do have, we do have a public hearing tonight on the codification of Madison County ordinances that have been posted and advertised. We do have the, it's, you have an ordinance number here, what number would it be, or Ms. Frog?
20214.
20214. And basically, the headline is, "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting a New Code for the County of Madison, Virginia, Providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violations thereof, Providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and the ordinance shall become effective." We're basically covering definitions and rules of construction, copies of the code, supplements for public inspection, review of criminal history, record information of applicants for county employment, home and retired, building and building regulations, building and building regulations on chapter eight that is getting replaced, procedures for plan reviews, pre-construction conferences, approval of explorations, extensions, protocols concerning delay payment payments. Anybody from the board have anything they'd like to say for, we have now from public comment? So we need another number besides 14? Yes. Is it 15? Is it 14 and 15, Ms. Frog?
If it's two, can be 14 and 15.
Okay, thanks. Anybody? Do the pub. Public hearing is open on 2020-14. Anybody? All right, back to the board. Bill would do. The only, the only one I've heard concerns about is one Todd says up on screen there is the 8.2B. And that's the raising of unoccupied buildings. And I know a lot of localities have this. I'm sure in rural localities there's many more of them. It's all based on citizen complaints. This is the only one I have any kind of reservation about. Greg, do you have any comment on this one?
Most localities have something comparable to this. It's a tool. The county is not required to do it. Frequently, these things are handled by individuals who have a problem with it.
I think it's something needed or. Well, it appears that it doesn't, it's not the right thing leaving it in there.
Ops, please, I'll play too much that's. This building, chapter, chapter eight is completely moved. One of the things we wanted to do is get on the absentee, can't get that. I just wish to accomplish that. The addition we sent to beauty code back last fall was an addition that they had recommended going on, but the new building official was familiar with a better one in his opinion, and so we considered this. Some of the confusion came when, and it's very much my recommendation, I think, here is to have this building maintenance component in it. But the community was familiar with not having a county, and apparently the county is not. These influences inside. That's why this is. Now, this is, this whole chapter is weird, and what we want is replace the, we need to get some back in with this edition.
Mr. Todd's just added parts on there that say for the portion of Madison County that are not located within the town of Madison. Both section B and section C. And, say it again. I don't know. I can't see it overzealous building officials. I think we've got a great one right now. We all like. So you're not particularly in favor of adding this entire par, chapter? I don't know. Rural localities, they've, I mean, we can all think old barns, they're sitting around, and if somebody was complaining about them, and then we're forced to get them out, making the, making the owner tear them down, that would seem. A little bit better.
Why don't you get rid of all the junker cars?
They're classics.
I'm not going to hold enough of those old barns.
Mr. Chairman, if that is a concern, you could address that by moving to adopt with the admission of those pending highlighting areas.
I'm not, I could go either way, but I do think that's something that, especially out here, we all know these, it just seems, seems like something that's not a good building official in the county.
This was contentious. This is something I've not endorsed, you can't do it. That little building, and then we don't, which is why we recommend this. Then again, theory for this whole codification thing is to, all the ordinance is in one place. Fill in the gaps, include things up, it's more, we kind of, I mean, reservations about this, the X is, but you stand on the recommendation, it's just.
I can go either way. All right, well, you know, if staff and county administrator and our county attorney feel like state, I'll say state. What's the question for the board? Other comments, questions, thoughts, or go on there? Well, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number 2020-14, captioned, "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting a New Code for the County of Madison, Virginia, Providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included herein, Providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective."
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, six folks saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Ms. Foster?
I'm trying to get her to, oh, yeah. About at 6:12, she said no, but I don't know if that's what that was made to.
Oh, she says aye, she says aye. Aye, it's spelled A-Y-E, I think. Apologize. All right. Next, we have ordinance 2020-15. Comments, thoughts, motion, we all want to. Yep. You would say?
All right, I move to approve ordinance 2020-15. Caption, "An Ordinance to Adjust the Following Section to the Codification." The ordinance is prepared by meeting beauty code, and I'll just read the section. Section 1-2, section 1-13, section 2-25, or 23, chapter 8. Buildings and building regulations, deletion of all beauty code, chapter 8, next. Chapter 8, buildings and building regulations, insertion of a chapter, replacement chapter 8. Section 14-27, 14-28, 14-30, 24-31, 24-27.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, six folks saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Ms. Foster?
I see a aye.
Aye, Mr. H, excuse me, there you go.
Thanks, but this clears the way for us to finish up. As soon as we can get this material down.
We need it. Thank you everybody for the hard work. All right, moving on, special appearances. Let's start with Leather's Lane. Leather's Lane, we do have a proposal that has been stated by several of the neighbors. Don't like to start, or? I'm very willing to comment here.
Mr. Woodby can start.
Mr. Woodby, you like to start? All right, somebody's got to start here.
I will speak.
All right, please.
I wanted to thank you first for the opportunity to speak about Leather's Lane.
Can I apply yourself?
Yes.
Your name?
My name is Robin Hoen. I live at 421 Leather's Lane. And I want to make a couple of points. In the fall of 2018, Mr. Greg asked the residents of our community to work together to rebuild relationships and to build trust in the community after a very difficult period. And we have since tried, worked very hard to do that. We've hosted cornhole tournaments, we've hosted a barbecue. We have tried to recreate those, rebuild those relationships and follow what Madison County has recommended. But the road remains an issue. Every time it rains, we get deep ruts. If it's more than half an inch of rain, there are serious, there are sections of the road that are in serious need of repair. They're down to the bedrock. It needs more permanent repairs than merely scraping and redistributing the gravel. Let me say a word about the process that Madison County has laid out for us. In August of 2018, Madison County established a set of guidelines for the road improvements along Leather's Lane. We had worked together with the neighbors to follow this process. We've submitted a proposal with the proposed code. We've submitted testing permission from the county to proceed with the work. I estimate from Robert. Either by email, or I actually personally spoke with many of his residents in person. Invited everyone to be on board with this. There were, there is no hidden agenda. We just want to repair the road. To use a medical analogy, if the road is a medical condition, like an injury or an illness, it would be permitted, and it would even be expected to seek a second opinion. We should not be limited to the opinion of a single provider. We don't want to create conflict within the community or with the county. We, in fact, we're just as tired of conflict as you are probably of hearing about it. We simply seek Madison County's permission to repair the road. We ask nothing. We were not asking for money. We're not seeing anything other than your permission to repair the road before the winter. Thank you.
All right. I found where I'm. But Lindoff, Mr. Lindoff has sent us an email, and it basically lays out the scope of work. It looks like you've got three culverts you're talking about doing, some brush a run, and some ditching. You've showed it to us.
There's no ditching.
No ditching. You've shown the area that you're impacting goes from a little bit into lot 20, but lot 21, lot 22, affected lot 1, 2, 3, and. What sort of lobbies? And then you've got lot 18, 19, 17, and 12 that you're, would be affecting. Is that correct?
That's work area two, yes.
All right.
And that goes in front of Mr. Woodby's undeveloped lot, lot 18. But you own the right of way, certainly. If you go back to the first picture, please, you'll notice that we were trying to avoid conflict with Mr. Lindby. So we did not, at this time, propose that we do any roadwork in front of his house where he lives. Even though if you drive by, you will notice, if you do a site visit, a ride through, you will notice that it is one area that also needs work. But we didn't want conflicts, so we did not, at this time, propose any work at this location. But in February, Mr. Woodby was with us, and we did seek an estimate to do some work in this area. But some of the residents that don't use that part of the road did not want to participate, so we pulled that part out. And recently, we just did the parts for area one that all the residents use, and all the residents are, we were told going to participate, what they can. There's no required amount that they need to get. The Hoen's have said that, not the Hoen's, the Giddelf said that they can't, at this time, participate, and we are not. We don't have a problem with that.
All right, Mr., all right, I'm going to remind you. Go ahead, yeah. Mr. Woodby has made it very clear, and I think he has comments, that he would not like any improvements done in front of lot 18 and lot 20, which he has. My suggestion on this is that all members of the community need to consent until we approve it. Stop us from being the intermediary on this, even though we own the real estate underneath the road.
In your original, in your original position letter, it does not state that all the residents have to agree that woodwork is or is not required. It simply states that you own the road and you own control of all decisions for the maintenance and the, of the road.
Thank you.
I speak.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's Brian Lindoff.
I'm Brian Lindoff.
I'm Charlotte Lindoff.
We live in 603 Leather's Lane.
Wait, this one?
Okay. I don't understand how the county would allow one person to keep a road from being fixed. And it is one person who is holding grudges against many of us in the neighborhood. So, my personal opinion, I'm not going to say anything at this point as to what this person has done to cause issues, to intimidate. But if you allow this one person not to have roadwork done, especially even along his properties, what's going to happen is, he's not going to do any work to that part of the road. By the way, he doesn't have to drive on the road in front of his properties. I know for a fact, back when this was an issue, when the lanes were involved, that Mr. Woodby did say he did not want any part of the road in front of his house fixed so that it would make it difficult for the lanes and the curvies to get to their homes. Okay, he told me that directly. I fear that that's going to be the same issue. He has no intentions of ever fixing that road. In fact, my husband and I paid, and we had gravel laid in front of his home, filled up a mud pit. We even went so far to gravel his driveway, trying to be good neighbors. But if the county allows one person to hold up the entire neighborhood, who by the way is for getting this road fixed.
All, all people who own homes are in favor.
Yeah, then you're letting one person who has a grudge against almost everybody in the neighborhood, that's, it's not going to change. Now, if you all want to, I'd be more than happy to go over some of the things that he's done, but I prefer not to go there.
Stay out of going against people personally.
Right, no, and I don't either, but I'm just saying, it's going to be difficult.
Mr. Woodby, you have comments you'd like to make?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, I've been maintaining the roof 20 some years. A friend of mine passed away.
Speak loud, Mr. Woodby, of course.
I've been maintaining the roof for 20 years in my own pocket. And so last February, I was, I've been keeping up with potholes, and I was paying for it in my own pocket. Yeah, everybody knows, getting ready to brown, so last February, I told this owner, they wanted help, they wanted to help. I told them so, and they wanted help, and I had to help, and everybody else. I mean, we need something fixed, and I'll fix it, appearing, being a neighbor. And I got to them, and they said, well, we're going to do, we'll put a cover pipe to my kids, and we're going to charge everybody. Then, then if you're the neighbors, you know, so we, 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 neighbors, we get each other, and charge each other. And if you don't like this map. I'll show you something. They could look at a second cover pipe, that's on the map.
Yeah.
They gave false information. That's 1260 feet from the main road, we measured it, 1260 feet was past where the markers are, now, next to the end of it, plus it's going back to the road, it's about 440, 300 feet off. Just someone with the information. I almost spent, last February, $800, rather than the other car you'll see. And I was continuing around, in my own pocket, goodness to everybody, thanking everybody for being neighbors. And these motherfuckers putting public pipes in the, friend deceased, he said that's a bad idea, covered up one, that was in front of my house, because he couldn't access his house, and they proposed to put two more in, and I'm just, they ain't, I'm not there during the week, came up to the others, he had pipes, not there to maintain. Crush and Run is a good idea. They want to build up that hillside, it was curved, it's over a 50-foot drop, and one lady was with her back there in the snowbank, she came out and they was icy, and the hill was slant. She must have set off the hill, not pull off, back up hill, to track, so me and my friend, it's a great dam, it graded down, so it's just the rough inside, but not open like. And the pictures were, she won't have to look at icy here, and now they want to restore it, pack it up, still back off the ground. But I can't, I can't tell them just to move, but I feel like there's consequences might happen.
Alright, we've been talking about a very, very pleasant Leather's Lane for like two years, at least. A road that is not even a mile long. What can we come to, excuse me, what can we come to some type of agreement to get everybody working together on this? If they didn't do in front of your house, Mr. Woodby, in lot 20, did they do the other work? Would you consent to work with these folks?
Describe, can that crush and run? Sorry. Describe, we want to drive, sorry, I was asking for a little bit. I've never done in front of my house, we've spent a couple thousand dollars redoing, covering.
If, if they don't do, which on the map is just that section where it tines, if they don't do in front of your house, would you allow them, allow them as part of the community to do the rest of the road in front of your lot 18?
Okay.
Would you allow them to do that?
I'm not paying for it.
If you, not paying for it, not asking.
We never, we never said we're charging anybody, it's all voluntary.
I don't know.
So no ditches are proposed, but as long as they don't do the work in front of lot 20, which is where y'all live, the rest of the work y'all are okay with?
I get permission from everybody else.
No permission from everybody else?
I got written permission, because I like to see it.
You got to see written permission.
Can you get some?
Let me take a deep breath.
Alright.
In February, we did, the Hoen's, Robin Hoen, champion going and talking to every neighbor. And also, Mr. Woodby was agreeable to the work in front of his house. It came when he saw the estimate, he didn't like the estimate including crusher run, he simply wanted gravel. So Mr. Woodby took it upon himself to go against what the community had prepared and got an estimate to do, didn't ask anybody, and laid the gravel that he was talking about, which is fine, we're grateful, and we were not going to ask him for any money with the new work, because he, even though he didn't ask us, he was, okay, he did do it and we do understand that. So it's never been required for someone to participate, it was, will you, if you can, how much? So we were not going to ask Mr. Woodby this time, but we were going to include him all of the correspondence, because he is part of the community.
Alright, and let's, let's clarify, Crusher Run is stone 57 with powder in, and it just gets like a road bear. I don't see any issue with that, are you rolling it?
Yes.
Alright, great, uh, good. I don't see any issue with Crusher Run, I really, really don't, I use thousands of tons of it every year, thousands of tons.
And our road is held up where Crusher Run was laid before it, over every storm, so.
Like I said, we've been talking about this road for a long time. If you don't do the work in front of 20, can you get signatures from the rest of the neighbors?
I do want to say something about that, I'm very sorry, because I have to go in front of that particular piece to get to our property, as well as the curbies, there's some neblyas, and whoever buys the lanes home. That piece of the road, it's a road that I mentioned that my husband and I tried to fix with the mud, because it can be difficult to get back there once it goes back. I feel that Mr. Woodby has no intention to do, intentions on maintaining that part of the road whatsoever. I feel, knowing the history, that he will let it go, so it's hard for us to have ingress and ingress onto our properties. You all own this road, Mr. Woodby does not own the road, we don't, and to allow one person to do this and possibly keep us from getting to our homes once the place is gone, you know, it's become a mess, really is not fair to the, those of us who live past it, he doesn't have to drive back there. So I just wanted to lay that, the other thing I wanted to mention, and in that particular part of the road, you were interested in before, is also, it has been altering the road itself, which is.
Against your position.
We need to not be altering the road.
Right, so, yes.
The best, the best thing on this, I'm trying to come up with something, nobody's going to win. If the way we don't want the work done, don't want to do work in front of lot 20, you don't want that, so nobody.
Can I say something?
Please, yes, ma'am.
It's on the cherry, we live at the.
Thank you, yes.
The very end of the road, so we've covered the whole road. I'm just afraid that if this work is not done as then proposed, and Mr. Hoffman feels it's the best way to solve the problem, and you leave part of it out, we're going to have a mess, despite what happened, or because we're not going to solve our problem. You know, pictures of what the road looks like, and what it has looked like starting from lot 18 down toward the Lendoffs, it was like that last year, because the way that it was rented, it doesn't work. That road has not been maintained for years in the business, and the forest is just, has invaded it, invaded it. So, I just think the whole thing needs to be done away from.
Mr. Woodby?
I have gravel, a section to take care of, we got a loop, beam goes across the road, that's where the water runoff, you just got a pipe, that green wasn't there, there gravel fluid, puddles glued, and they're about to cross it. Me and my friend, we. Just to rule it.
Now, you're right.
And so we did it, and made things fine, so we gravelled the section, on the gravel inside.
What do y'all think here? I think, I hope still on the second job.
Part of the road has been changed by Mr. Woodby. Areas that have been changed, it's difficult to pass, you can't even go in some of these areas now, that's just happened a lot. I'm worried about our safety, if the road gets bad and we have storm, sleet, ice, the area where the homes live, it very easily slips off the road, so I think safety is another concern, we haven't talked about.
What law are you, Ms. Hoen?
We are, I think, lot 16, we're right at the intersection.
You're in, you're in the corner there.
She's a senator.
The one, we're the one in the corner with the cemetery.
Go back up.
Go back.
It's the one in the corner with the cemetery, that one, guys.
What do y'all think here? I mean, I. Mr. Woodby? Go ahead.
We hawking the road, if you look on the map, and where it all is pegged more or so, a lot, a road across my house, it's right on the map, it's right on the line. I think, I think, they all.
Now, talk to us, talk to us, talk to us.
They all, they kept coming to the first part. It was originally over, now it's in the original spot.
Now, talk to us, talk to us, talk to us, don't talk.
Right way.
You gotta talk to us, none of this back and forth.
And this is all put right, it's all here.
And then you come from the center of the road to the peg, it's like.
Yeah, it's made in the center of the road, to each peg, it's 25 feet, 25 feet, 25 feet, it's awesome, just.
Marty, what do you got?
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Woodby, you know, I, I come up there often to see Mr. Goulis, and over the last, I don't know, two years or three years, from where you turn into, on Leather's Lane, past Stick's house, start back down the hill towards his, his gate, that used to be horrible, it was horrible. And you have maintained that, that part. Now, so, so why didn't you go on down in front of your house, just because it was costing you money?
Money? One neighbor moved in, they didn't want to go in front of there.
Any further than, than where you did?
And a couple here, they started, I don't know, some bike man, they. I said, well, y'all want to grab, grab?
Alright, so, well, here, here's what I'm getting to, is, the neighbors, the rest of the neighbors have, I, I think they recognize the fact that you have been maintaining that fairly long section of that road for a long time, and it's, it's real nice now, I must admit, you know? So why, if, if they're willing to pay to, to improve in front of your house and in front of lot 18, and you don't have to, I mean, you've already forked out enough money on that first section, why not let them fix the other section for you?
We like to keep it more, I think, that way.
Well, what's it, what's the difference between gravel and, and, and crush and run, yeah, in your opinion? Yeah, crush and run does pack more, and you think that is a bad thing?
Well, I would actually use a couple tons, a couple loads, crush and run, a lot of areas of the road and pass.
Yeah.
They don't know it. They don't know what it, one year past, I used crush and run, it's been a lot of spots of worry, and every foot coming in, I could build my house, and I used crush and run, and I used to gravel, do crush and run, switch it here and there, grab.
And also one thing.
I'm sure, I'm identifying.
And Jackie Woodby, and it's like, once they gravel their property, they're in front of their property, they ask him not to come down there anymore with the truck. They, they gravel from lot 18 to the end of the road, and once they gravel that, they ask him not to do any more maintenance.
My house, good or friendship, that's okay.
That's not what did, but, we, we didn't start. Once we take care of our road, would you all give us approval, or Mr. Hoffman?
2018.
There were no, there's no reason for him to come up and scratch the road, it's in perfect condition, the curbies road, and the crush and runs in perfect condition, therefore we didn't need him to come and scratch the road.
I guess Mr. Woodby has left, I can't.
No, he's left.
Will you, I hate, I really feel bad for you guys, I'm sorry this has come up again. I want to apologize for all the people who are, who are living together in the community. But why don't you ask Mr. Woodby why he mows the grass at the beginning of Leather's Lane, but he doesn't mow the grass in front of his house?
Alright.
Since he started this.
No, 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 I'm not engaging in that either. Alright. Are the cones still there?
No.
Cinder blocks still there?
No.
Done, cease and desist work. Alright, it's all gone, yeah.
The flags are still.
The lights are still.
And the light.
The right of way needs to be cleared, right of way needs to be cleared, 100%.
2018, hell, read the lips, section B, we got copies. Hell, read, saying, you know, the side of the road is defined, these are lake lines, marks for lake lines.
No, alright, alright, done, done, gum and fuck and crap.
Well, we can't make him do the work in front of his house, you know?
No.
I mean, if, you know, if he doesn't want that particular type of improvement, there's not much we can do about that.
Let's do, let's do. It is the right way, yes, ma'am, but there's got to be some kind of consent here from everybody. If you're not doing the work in front of y'all from Mr. Woodby's lot 20, you consent to agree with the work on everything else. If it impedes your access to your property, what right of ways work, you can come back and, and go down that path. At this point, I think it's, I mean, you, according to your map, it looks like lot 20 is right there, or lot 20 is a very small section of the road that y'all are talking about improving.
Correct.
And I understand y'all want to improve the whole thing, or the portions that you identified.
We wanted to do the whole road.
Agreed, we appreciate it. I think if we can get Mr. Woodby to agree that everything else, so lot 20 is okay, that nobody's happy, and we all know. Does that seem fairly reasonable to everybody? You know about, tell us.
Well, yeah, can I ask a?
Why not?
It's going to sound like a technical question, but, so the difference between 21, between Crusher Run and gravel, gravel, what is, what are we defining as gravel?
Gravel is simply.
Just loose 57?
Gravel is simply loose 1 to 3-inch stones, and it's loose and it can't be compacted with a compactor, and once you, it basically, when, when the FedEx guy comes roaring down the road, it distributes it throughout the whole right of way. With Crusher Run, actually it has what I call minor dust, or very finely ground-up gravel with other 1 to 3 inches with it, and it can be compacted. The more you drive on it, the harder it gets, it's the cheap alternative to paving the road.
And also gravel, when it rains, of course, it, in some spots, it just runs off into people's property.
So I'm a civil engineer. So, so I, I know the answer. But, but that's, yeah, that's right. Gravel, so I, I just want to, I want to see if I can find a place that's a, a surface that you might like, everybody might like. So crushed gravels are actually river gravels normally, they're a highly salacious stone, they're brown typically, they make a, they can be made to be a nice topping or something, and they do make it look like a country road, I've done it on my driveway, you got to haul it from over in the valley, and it's more expensive.
It's way expensive.
It's, it's expensive, but it does make it look more like a, a country road. I'm sympathetic to the folks that want to, that want to stabilize that road some, and it, it pains me to think that the county is going to piecemeal a piece of work where there's a group of property owners that want to put the money to stabilize their, their, their access in and out to their homes. So I'm trying to think of a way to come up with a surface that looks like this quiet country road that the Woodbees want, and still is stable enough under the conditions that we know we're subjected to. Because I went down that road a couple years ago after a rainstorm, and it was a mess, it needed some stabilizing.
It's already over our limit with the Crusher Run, and to require us to use something that's more expensive is going to be more difficult and financial taxing on some of us. Not all of us are working permanently because of the situation we are in, so this will, if you require something different than Crusher Run, you're going to basically have some people not contribute as much, and other people are going to have to contribute more than they should. So Mr. Hoffman is a qualified member of the business community, he has this, and he has suggested to us that Crusher Run is the way to go, and that we have been successful in two locations, we have no runoff, no, nothing else has happened to the road for over a year with all the rains and tides, it works very well, and it shouldn't be imposed upon us to use a specific kind, I know that you're a civil engineer, you're a VDOT, but some of us aren't working full-time anymore, some of us are retired, some of us are on pension.
There are other products that is, one, that is cause contact.
Actually, may I?
I, I would still use the crusher run.
Oh, there you go.
Frankly, uh, and I, I just was trying to come up with something that you all could make it look more country road like, uh, to be the crusher run is country road. So I, I'm, I'm struggling with the Whitby's definition of country road, frankly, uh, cause it is not a paved road. So if anybody thinks that's a paved road, they'll be sadly mistaken. Next time they get a deluge.
May I?
It's better, it's better.
Yeah, to your point real quickly, that I spoke with, uh, the Hoffmans just before coming to the meeting. And they will be in touch with, um, uh, Matt Ailer, um, to go over what, to make sure that it is okay with the counties, with the, I think, soil and water, to make sure that what we are using is acceptable and permissible with you.
Mr. Whitby.
We used to do one crusher run on Fairland. Rodney, who's just picked up, and they pick them in there, go there. And they say, all it's a surface and pretty concrete, we'll speed up. It's happened several times, several times. So we just wanna have, we got pure and brain here. They're, they're not here for a while.
Put down what exactly what we're recommending. If you go down there right now, you would think that it's, it's packed. It's the water just runs off. You put a rail on it so that the water runs to the side. Where it, all the road, where it's just gravel. With all this rain, the rainwater just forces down. There's no direction to it. There's no ground, there's no even slope on it. And I think what Mr. Hoffman wanted to do is put a little slope to it, so the water runs to the side. Then we also gonna have runoffs, me on the property from the.
What lots are you, Mr. Kirby?
Um, it does, I don't think we have a lot number.
All right.
Everything.
Your property is not in the subdivision per se.
All right, so there are these are right.
Yeah, part of it.
But that's already a best.
Yes, sir.
I was just trying to say, when it does rain or it does snow, no one pays for anybody to come up and scrape the road when it snows. He is out all time tonight trying to keep the snow down. And so does it rain, so they're trying to fix the ruts in the road.
All right, I'm still the same one I was. Not in lot twenty, everything else, let's do.
Can I put one more thing out?
Yep.
Cause, uh, Mr. Whitby helped me understand what the real concern was there. So how much, did you speak to Mr. Hoffman about prospects of a speed hump or something like that?
You have a rule.
They try to keep the speeds down.
When the water runs off, you have rules that's like this, and that, that slows the traffic. We don't want to keep like that, because it's letting the water off it. Is it big from the public pipe in front of our house? Every side is flooded. It will be flooded, and that's happened before, and it happened again.
Was the speed rocket what you had, man? An inverted speed.
All right, still there. Everything except lot twenty, Mr. Whitby will agree on. Mr. Hoffman doing the work, he's a reputable contractor in Madison. I'm sure if he does the work correctly, as he will, um, hopefully Mr. Whitby will see what great improvement is, and maybe he'll work something else out. But as long as it stays in front of, off of lot twenty. Anybody have any problem with that? I think we've reached some type of general consensus, not really with soil. What do you got?
Make paper.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, please, just a point of reminder.
Yep.
The county owns the dirt that the road sits on, so the county can do whatever it wants.
Yes, sir.
The county has expressed through you a desire to have some level of consensus from the neighborhood. But it is true that that is not part of what is required. And the county set forth these guidelines several years ago to try to avoid having to come back every time. Uh, by that measure, these guidelines have done a tremendous failure.
Yep, all right, so now it's back in front of us. We've got four and one by virtual. And is the consensus on the board, they're thinking to all be working together? Everybody shaking their heads positive? Amber hasn't said no. Um, work together, it's the best agreement. Everybody in favor of this? Everybody good with this? No, nothing in front of lot twenty, everything else, please go ahead.
That is the county's prerogative as the owner of the underlying surface. As the, of the underlying.
We will write a letter, and if y'all can reach further agreement with Mr. Whitby about the quality of work, which will surely be great, um, we will change our direction. But at this point, I think that's the best we can do. Does that sound fairly reasonable? Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to point out, and, and Sean, under nine D of the agreement that was set forth of, I don't know, a year or so ago, whatever it was, it says, no private citizens, you'll have the right to change the existing road. So with that said, that's why, when I was reading this over earlier this afternoon, in my mind, Mr. Whitby would have, uh, say on his, his property, but in front of his property. That's why I'm, I'm agreeing with.
The road adjacent to is wrong.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Kirby also owns some of the property on the other side of the road, as do the Hines. So don't they have a say?
Nine D says that you can't change the existing road.
We need to change it.
It has been changed. Sorry.
Mr. Greg, you've been up there regularly.
I, yes.
Yes.
I.
Drive some fuel. Uh-huh. What do you, uh, hey.
So that's useful.
All right, I'm done with this.
Yep.
No lot twenty, everything else, go ahead, Whit. Hopefully it's great. If it prevents your access to your property in a reasonable way, come back to us and change over it. Hopefully the quality of work will be of such quality that Mr. Whitby will change his mind, and maybe y'all can work something out. Right now, that's where we're at.
Yes, Chairman, one further point. The county is not committing any public funds to this program.
Exactly. Ms. Brian, you get that? Thank you, Ms. Brian. All right.
We got it covered.
Anything else on this? Good? Everybody good? Nothing in front of lot twenty, everything else, let's go ahead. Thank you all very much, I'm sorry to disappoint everybody. Um, moving on. Boys and Girls Club, whole twenty twenty program. I assume you're here with the Boys and Girls Club. But ma'am, please, you can stay there, you can go over there.
Have to take a mask on so I can see.
All right.
I'm Nana Popovich from Boys and Girls Club local board.
All right, all right. Joe, man, any conversation you can talk on, we still have a lot of business to do here.
I hope we're good enough.
All right, Boys and Girls Club, please proceed.
This is Kate Lambert, she's the chief developmental office from the Charlottesville administrative umbrella for the national club. They oversee six clubs. With COVID, our operation changed like everything else did. We had a virtual summer program, and now we are open. This is our second week. We're open four days a week from seven thirty in the morning to five thirty in the evening. And we've asked for a hundred and twenty-five thousand of the CARES Act money to help us pay our bills so that we can do this program. This would cover expenses from now to December thirtieth. And, uh, we submitted our request, and then there were some questions that we haven't replied to, the questions showing how that money, where we, what are we gonna spend the money on, where we kept those numbers. So we're here to answer any other questions you might have.
They'll recover in sixty kids. In fourth and fifth grade.
That's our, so that's our capacity, sixty kids a week. Um, thirty kids a day is our capacity. And right now, we're just at fifty percent capacity.
The way Ms. Graham, uh, the school superintendent, who was in favor of this, has to pay for, hopefully some of your members or someone, um, is the one twenty-five will cover your operating expenses till December. Then your other funding will cover the rest of the school year, correct?
And the summer.
And the summer, good. We're not coming back here to ask for another read.
This is a one time. We, we didn't have our derby in twenty twenty, and we won't have our derby in twenty twenty-one. But that's our biggest fundraiser. So, uh, but other people have been very generous, and so we think we can swing it. Uh, and we have it standard to eighth graders. We get fourth and fifth graders first. We, this is our second week, we've got some space, so they're reaching out to other kids too.
We're hearing from families that, uh, families who've chosen a hundred percent virtual, especially with some homeschool kids, that they are really interested in, um, paying their kids into a full day of them. So, we personally, I consider them to be a club.
Yeah, a couple of things. So, well, two weeks ago, we were questioning this hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, since then, I, I attended a, uh, school board meeting, and, uh, I asked them, uh, first of all, was this going to have an educational, uh, education element to it? And they said, yes, and I see, and I asked for this yesterday, and, cause I wanted to see where the money was being spent. Those, those numbers in column I right there are loaded with French, by the way. But scroll up just a little bit, Jack, you'll see there's a STEM specialist in there. So I, I see that they do have a education, uh, element to it. Um, and then I asked the, the school board the other night, I said, so is this money well spent? And they all said absolutely, yes, they thought it was. So, um, and then, since then, I found out that they have, and I asked them why, just fourth and fifth graders. And it's because of the, the way the older kids go to school, and the younger kids attend in, in school class more often. The older kids, I guess they don't, but they feel like they can handle this virtual situation better, that the most susceptible was fourth and fifth. So that's the way it started, but now it's been expanded to, um, what, seventh and eighth?
Six, seventh.
Six, seventh and eighth as well. So, um, I'm more comfortable with that. And, um, then when I, when I got the, the budget back here, and I saw that in fact they had some educational component to it. That, and the fact that we've gotten a, a donor, uh, that grew up in Madison County, that's been very generous, um, so I'm, I'm in, I'm a lot more comfortable with it now, that they rub it now. Hoffman, there's gonna be a question.
And you're absolutely sure you can't do your twenty twenty-one though?
Yeah, we, we, we're pretty sure we can't plan, but, um, that's the problem. It's we just don't know what's gonna happen. We have certain things that can make it difficult to plan something that's that, that far out, that's a an outdoor event, but there's a lot of people in a small space.
It's all about the elements of that.
I hope so, I hope so.
It does, we'll have some kind of, we'll have some fundraising or something, but, yeah. Yeah, we spent money, because the plan starts a year ahead. So we, we spent some money last year, some deposits on things that we had to, we had to get money back from them. But all of our donors, our sponsors were generous and said, you put, we've already sent you some. We may look at.
All right, Mike, any further information?
We can talk forever, but y'all don't want that tonight, so.
That is correct. You guys have some stuff, you got anything else?
Um, the only, we can't actually give you the money facility by one of these. And, uh, Boys and Girls Club, I don't pay, but we, uh, we'd be nice enough to send you a sample document from the city of Charlottesville, so I at least have something to work on from. But, um, that's the goal, we might agree next, when we get to the district. You know, within, by the end of the month, I would like to have all the documents. As long as you guys decide on the money, once we need to get the documents, you execute, and then we can discuss.
And Jay, we have additional documents too, from the county of Orange. That'll be the.
Um, scavengers, you do whatever you have.
All right, work with her, how do you get your money?
Sure.
That work for everybody? All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Um, consent agenda. Eight through L. Five through four.
Mr. Chairman, I am going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
What's made, is that further discussion? And then all the papers in book sign on. All right. Put a sign sign. All right, constitutional law scores. All right, uh, Ms. Brian.
I have not received any nipples, but I think this is tough for me to have a prospect, so we'll wait and see what happens.
How's that going?
I'm working on it.
I got a commitment this morning.
Did you?
He said he was gonna fill out the paperwork. I said.
Is that the same one that you talked about that day?
Yeah.
I sent him what he needed, and he never responded.
That's what he told me this morning, he was apologizing profusely to me.
I'll check my email tomorrow, I hope he does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need one more person to operate according to state code.
I have five, six.
Four, four, be four to hit the four. We got three right now. Let's try to find one more crazy.
Were you done with Addie?
Yes.
Well, I had one too, this city was definitely gonna pull up yet.
How's that going?
Well, I passed him coming out, I thought he was on his way to deliberate. That's what's.
Hold in front of one, direct him in here.
So that's.
What?
We need four.
We need four, we got three right now, twenty, we're actually gonna be overachievers with five, maybe. Come back.
Okay.
Yep.
That's much.
We do need to do four.
We do need to do four. I was, I was hitting a couple of inquiries that I've made. I ask you caution. I'm sure the call for a, that I believe is the communication coming. I'm like, I'm like, so nothing to tell you. I'm sure we can ask that before the person in place.
Get your people to fill out forms. Keep up the pressure. Hit it. I'll email someone. See how that goes. All right. Moving on. Well, she left. Commonwealth attorney has a funding request. She needs $57,000 a year. Get along 12 dash 1 dash 20. She says she needs to kind of, in the middle of October pertaining to our personnel policy. She has to have the funding in place prior to advertising for this position. MJ?
What is this position?
It's the assistant Commonwealth attorney that is, um, that is required by state code based on the sheriff's office using body cameras.
So, she'll have two assistants. Is that right?
MJ, you have comments?
Well, it's certainly more, I think, I don't know, somewhere around 50%, 60%. Certainly more than that.
Yes.
Probably you should see probably somewhere around a 30% to 35%.
Yeah.
I can work out the numbers. I mean.
We, we have.
And look, sorry, that, your shield, your computer, et cetera, et cetera. So, the best way to go about doing that from a budgeting point of view is to get it all done at one time instead of doing this.
The, we have, we're coming to you. Bear, bear with me for a minute. In this package, we have 20, um, um, resolution 2020 dash 24. And that's the second half of the, of the fiscal year capital budget. What? It says resolution to appropriate fiscal year 2021 Madison County capital budget.
No, we don't, um, on the operating budget, you have taken the position this year that you don't think you only appropriate. Since, I think back for, I don't remember when you adopted the policy of having separate operating capital budgets. But since you started doing that, you have taken the position that you appropriate as needed the capital. So, it is not true that we're doing the second half capital budget appropriation. We're doing, we cannot appropriate more than one. So, I'm asking you for a month, the September appropriation, uh, out of the capital budget. I would be loathe what I'm talking about. I, I'm not sure why I screwed it.
When do you propose, when do you propose, where, where I'm going this way is we're gonna buy equal appropriations for the operating budget. Can we not tie some of the funding or just that number and tie funding to that and do the appropriation at that time? All right. When do you, when do you propose? Let me ask you a different way. When do you propose appropriating money for Ms. Barry's position?
That has to be, that has to be done through supplemental appropriation because the money is not needed out of the budget.
When could we potentially have a supplemental appropriation?
The next week.
There you go. Would that work for you, Ms. Barry?
It would. I was hoping, because of the way that the calendar works, I was hoping to start advertising at the first of October. Because bar results come out essentially the middle of October. So, I wanted to make sure that I was capturing those new graduates, newly entering the country. Also, there are a lot of holidays in November and I'm gonna be out of the office coming November as well. So, I wanted to have this as close to done early November so that somebody could start December.
So, as a practice, this board often approves the, uh, a motion to move ahead with various types of projects and expenditures prior to the point in time where you actually approve supplemental appropriation. So, so, you know, I, I think it's meaningless semantics at this point in time.
Correct. And I, and I, I'm trying to go along, hey, y'all, you know, if you're gonna.
It's worth it. It's worth it.
So, my position on this is, in this particular case, I would normally say before somebody goes out and hires or even advertising, they should get board approval because as a matter of fact, anytime you change headcounts, uh, full-time headcount, uh, versus budget versus the original budget, you gotta go and ask for it. You don't do, you don't ask for, you can't because that's where our budgets start. However, in this particular case, you have a signed commitment, a binding legal agreement, legal agreement to buy bike cameras. And it just so happens that the law says if you have bike cameras, you have to hire an attorney.
Do we, so, so. The easy way, we, would somebody, just, would somebody make motion that we approve Ms. Barry going out and advertising for this prior to the appropriate or the supplemental appropriation being made?
Second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Start on the second one, sure. You're in your motion in the second.
And I'm in my second.
Further. Yes. Um, anybody else have any comment on this? Here in number one, fair decision, folks, say aye.
Aye.
Put a same sign. Um, all right. Tracy. Economic Development Co-workers, co-working agreement.
Yes. Um, I don't know if it went around or not, and I didn't know if it's gonna be on, so I don't have copies. It's the same agreement we talked about quite a while ago, but with COVID. Um, I was getting more inquiries about it. And because we do have Wi-Fi in the office and we do have that separate door. Why we're still here. Technically, we could have one door that they use to go up the stairs down the street and not have to walk through the visitor center if they were to use it. And the other places have filled out, Miller's School, the people that just need an office, not a storefront. These are just businesses that are trying to get going. Also falls in line with the rural entrepreneurship program with Go Virginia as well. And I did have Sean look at it for us soon. We would add a COVID, very detailed COVID related information to it.
Review of anything you have on this?
Not at this stage. Um, you know, we, we went through this some time ago. Make sure that distinction in the business simply, you know, making facility. Otherwise sponsoring or endorsing any of the people that might be using the facility.
Anybody have comments on this? But this is, this isn't ready to be put in place. This is still a draft that you're working on?
It's a draft. I mean, and we went after COVID, which I got right before I left on vacation, so I didn't have time to. That was very detailed information that we wish I had in it too.
If you're gonna, you're gonna dictate the cost per office, cost is defined as 100, 1, 200. Anyone in the office for 300, 300 for adjoining office space?
There's only that one adjoining office.
You're gonna say, y'all, one that's at 300. How do you differentiate between one and 200?
So, the one that's next to the kitchen that actually has taste mountain foxes together in right now, I would say that would be the $200 one. And there's the small corner offices, although Bruce may need to put some equipment too.
Don't say that. We're not talking about that right now. Thank you for that extent.
But there are two other offices that are 100. So, it's pretty.
All right. Anybody have any problem with this? Market office space right now is in high man. We can help from citizens, but getting some space obviously will issue. If you work with Mr. Greg and come back to us with a formalized type of lease that's simple and easy and we can get this thing going.
This one is about, except without COVID. It covers everything.
And the COVID stuff?
Yes.
Get it to Mr. Greg, make sure it's straight, and then come to us. And we may be able to add something potentially to the bottom next week.
And then on the business recovery grants, can I get a, just a little quick update?
Sure.
Um, just got that at the end of the day. Just had enough time to call Stephanie and check the ones that they have, um, they've scored so far and make sure they're up to date on their taxes. There are two that are pending. Question is, they're gonna reach back out to the ones that were acquired that didn't get their paperwork done in time because it's a set. There's like maybe 30,000 unaccounted for that they're gonna see if they want, if, if those people can get their paperwork in. If that doesn't work, do you guys want me to open it up to nonprofits at that point? Or just go with what we've got?
Go ahead, Mr. Greg.
The board has two options. It can either turn it over to nonprofits and have a partner handle it that way or the board can take it back over and determine how it wants to allocate to nonprofits. Question, how much?
Yeah. Third, Gary. Let's let Ms. Doran play that one. Yeah. And, and open it up to nonprofits too, when it gets to that point. How's that work? Everybody okay with that? That would include the library we have a request from.
Right.
Hopefully you're talking in this suit.
Yeah, I know she sent a letter because at first I told her to send a letter straight to you guys at that time.
Get some documentation. Um, all right. Well, anything else on this? Moving on. Um, here is the resolution for the capital funding. Uh, is we gonna talk about this anyway? What you talking about?
I'd like to talk about.
All right.
And I'd like the spreadsheet to look. On, uh, on the, not, not that, not the document itself, the actual Excel. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, I just wanna walk through this a little bit. What, what I have asked for is to appropriate the balance of what we have in the data. Capital items and the data processing and technology. That is not really to our ERP project. Talk a little bit more about other things we have going on related to data processing, related to IT. We have a lot of that. That has nothing to do with ERP. Then we need, I asked you to, to appropriate the 150 that was originally in the budget for the ERP project and the 30,000 for the representation, which has been rolled up into our ERP project. Um, that's all the money that's in the budget right now is 180. Um, when we get further into the analysis on, on software costs, you'll see that I'm short on money. What I would like to point out is that there's some things that were in the original budget, like an in-part payment system for the sheriff for $30,000, which is now being paid for with care's money. And 61,000 dollar direct responsible vehicle for EMS. Um, another 15,000 dollars for EMS. And 208,000 dollars for, um, for equipment for an ambulance, which appears we're also gonna buy that and use care's money for that. So, when we talk about in future about where to get the extra money we need to pay for the, um, to pay for the rest of the ERP project, what I would like to do is I would like to draw on some of these other dollars that were in the budget that had been replaced by care's money. Are you following what I'm saying? So, that's where I'm looking at to get my extra money to pay for, without making us negative on the budget, without using any more fund downs and all these other things.
Fair, but well, that's why I wouldn't do it.
Right. That's why I, that's why I wanted to do this off. Sometimes the way I do my numbers, I have to do them all at one time or else you won't, you won't see the way everything fits together. So, that, that's why I asked to make sure that we did this. Um, and the only other thing on here besides that is, is to be done, request the school board to have. I, I don't believe it seemed like a fire.
Uh, you got any questions? Yes, for this, see how you. Small picture terms of the, uh, everybody sees. You know anything about this, Ron? The, the fire system at the school, way. Have waited or? Yeah.
And they, and they actually wanted to do the return on gratitude first because they're facing like a 10 or 15% increase in price of it. So, they asked to do that.
Spring, front of system or all of them?
From a whole suppression system or?
Fire alarm panel. You know about these, John?
I mean, I know about, but I don't know about what you're talking about.
They go bad after a while. They can be replaced and stuff.
Yeah, it's like old computers and. Part storm.
All right. We do have a resolution in front of us. Um, I think MJ is going by utilizing some of the folks that we're not using, working off of the care system right away. We have resolution 2020 dash 24. There also be comments on this?
I'm going to approve resolution number 2020 dash 24.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Here's number one, fair decision, folks, say aye.
Aye.
Put a same sign.
Does that one thing, just to just moving to this? Um, in this capital budget preparation, Bruce and I have the capitals. We had 19, we originally had more money in budget when we put it up. We had $19,000 in budget for next, for various kinds of network. What we're looking at right now, all of these things have nothing to do with ERP. Um, the sheriff is looking to move its phone system onto our MyTelemark system, which hopefully will eventually result in very significant telecommunication savings. But right now, we don't know what those savings are. But in order to do that, we, we need wiring in this office. We need AMS to do some work for us. In addition, EMS and CID, um, they need fire laws. Technology line to change the way they hook up into our network. We need new wiring. We need, yeah, we need a little. We're eventually gonna need to replace all of our network switches. And that is kind of tangent, tangentially related to ERP because, um, we'll need to replace the switches to get the speeds that we need to work on that. Um, and we're also going to need Comcast connections to a lot of, a lot of different buildings. So, there's a lot of, all of that together, and we need to start working on this stuff this year, well, soon. Um, that $19,000 is not going to cover all of this. I don't, I mean, I guess we can, we can either take it out of fund downs, we can take it out of contingency. Um, the problem is, is it's just like it's very slow piecing all this together. I, my personal preference is, is to get a big picture and get all the numbers lined up at one time. We're having a very hard time doing that just because it's kind of an incremental task. But I, I'm just telling you, probably my guess is we need, we've got 19, we can play around with it. We probably need another 15 or 16. Eventually.
Where we are.
I don't know. I actually don't, I have to, I've usually checked out, but I don't know. The one big thing is, I guess, to improve the connectivity for, um, the EMS building and the CID building. Bruce's recommendation is to replace their wire, you know, their connection to the network, which is through radio system for Comcast lines. And that's 100, it's 180 dollars, which is on the, so 360 per month.
All right.
So, and we don't have that much of the money. So, the question is, do we have the authority to do the head with that? To at least fix, to get their phone systems or the networks that are moving in EMS and CIV?
Okay, so. Got comments on this?
Well, I mean, every time a store goes through the CID, it's their phone, vendor, and their data. Happened if you ever called a few weeks ago. But I would say, yes, and then, and then also they've got some rooms in the back that do not have data wiring in them, which is basically useless space. So, to get in there, whatever dozen or so connections in there, definitely help that EMS, understanding situation. I found out today that that is gonna require some construction and a approval, approval by the property owners. Allow them to get in there and do it nicely and cable. That's gonna knock that out for six weeks. So, the quicker we pick them up, the better off we'll be. EMS facility.
Question? Yeah, so, so we're, so at your place, Noah, so we're switching to Comcast, which is fiber from what, from? How, how are you, how is he hooked up now?
He's getting his signal from the radio on top of the volunteer rescue.
Okay. And it's just that?
There's fiber on that street. Gets the fiber. And we don't have a total project.
I don't think, well, these are fiber. I think they've already got infrastructure in that area that you see the transits and cable. And they need permission. So, it's not, it's not, nothing like a big huge, it's a fiber.
But you're plucking into a pre-existing line that's, or pre-existing structures that are currently there. You're just running a line over to the building and it will be good.
And it's free.
That's the best price so far.
My, my, I just gotta emphasize this is we've got all these little things going on that are gonna add up to, you know, five figures. And I can't, I just don't, we don't have the numbers yet to be able to figure it out.
I, any of us to come in and. It's not even a cost. They don't have the estimate on it yet, but the turn, turnaround of the gain is that sent check system that's in there was costing us a whole bunch of money. We part, port those numbers over to the MyTelemark system and we can get rid of probably, I would say more than a handful of lines that no one knows if there even be a use anymore. Will ultimately save us money down the road on that. And the key circuits, the data lines that come in either will go also.
All right.
Yeah, we're actively looking at all of our telephones because we think that we can find, I would love to be able to find savings in the telephones bills to actually pay for all this stuff. I just, I mean, it's like, it's a very slow, tedious process and you can't.
We've been talking about it.
Not to work through it.
We've been talking about it for a year and a half. It's, we've been talking about it for a year and a half. It's a lot of work. We appreciate everybody kinda going in that. Yes, sir.
Um, before the non-bill was concerned, they did a study. I've actually reached out to write off the boss of Bruce. They did a study about nine years ago. Came and looked at the phone line. Very similar to what we're doing now. We could not forfeit anything we had then. With that being said, technology has changed. Bruce has got, the rise guy come in next week. What happened?
In our office, the point contact.
Okay, got you, got you. So, when they come in, my gut tells me what I'll be able to do away with some of this stuff is, when it was all done, IP phones were there, but they were buried. Uh, I think this will probably be a trend outside there.
Want to give administrative approval, let them proceed with these projects. Come to, come back to us with the post engagement. Sound reasonable? All right. Please proceed. All right. Um, let's talk, tell us about progress towards achieving goals.
It's the, uh, asking the, 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 this. For add eight series of goals we've already. We have been working on some of that. Some of these things have been completed, the, uh, some of the work is, uh, putting more patients in the back. Just as a, we finished the complication, these things worked. So that's, uh, we're in the middle of this EMS negotiation. And I suppose that this complication will start with. Well, in terms of the administration. Some of the personnel level items, we still need to complete the implementation to pay study. We're actually halfway there on that. We issued, uh, the question applications for part-time administrative work. It's important to say that when we have vacancies. Capital program is the one, uh, careful, I must say, the, uh, radio system. I mean, Bill told us, um, we don't have contracts in place, but we do now. There's a, there's a, lines for, for tower sites, and so that's, uh, the primary school project doesn't really, is due, uh, tomorrow or next week. Information at this building and the hotel. So that will be in front of, probably. Things are looking up. Competition with the, uh, the contractors and the, uh, we have purchased the more building. We've, uh, gone to the courthouse with some security issues and. Take care of all that. And then working on some of these IT things, uh, obviously the big thing right now is raising the security. This is our.
So that your goals and priorities were established last December without, before we really entered into this ERP project. And as, as, I mean, I actually distributed information to you today. Um, that, that probably, both of those numbers on both the records management and the ERP, though live probably is going to be, uh, 22 and not 21. And that's just, I mean, that's the nature of, of the, I mean, you can come up with estimates on stuff with how long things are going to take. But if you do it before you actually meet vendors, it's just a guess. There's one other thing I would like, want to say is, I gotta emphasize this. Um, the procurement, whatever you decide to do with procurement has to be very, very closely linked with what you do with your new talent system. So there's very large, there's a very large procurement, uh, piece to the new software. So, so that procurement has to proceed at pace with the implementation. You can't, you can't do it outside of the system headquarters. Understand what I mean? Because to some extent, when you have, um, if you have procurement software, which we will now have, which all the department heads will have access to. You can't, you can't, your, whatever business processes you put in place, you have to work around software. You know, you have to come up with something that the software can actually do, is what I'm trying to say. So, so there's this interaction.
So we're working on that. Yeah, yeah.
We've made, I mean, we've drilled enough, we, the consideration has made big progress. We knocked out a handful of stuff on this list. The, uh, software side of this, um, when it pertains to COVID, it slowed up pretty dramatically. We knew this, we don't get a project, listing that model, that's one. The end, if we get a better product, yeah, that's a whole lot of.
Uh, do you have anything else on this?
All right.
All right, um, all right, let's do some consulting on this. This Barry, are you going to?
I'm good. We are just moving along, trying to get things organized, um, and prepare for the implementation of the body worn cameras, other than cameras. So we've been trying out some quality of the courtroom, some of it's been great, so it's still a work in progress. Um, we, I hope to hear more about jury trials across the common law tomorrow. We are up until 5:00. There are pictures that are eligible to have jury trials, they're back to the group late last week, and they have to wait 45 days. There's an article in Daily Progress that said probably not till after the first thing in the year. Um, so we'll just kind of have to wait and see how that goes. So far, it hasn't been too much of a problem on the criminal side, but I think things are stacking up fast and deep, um, on the civic side of things. Um, not part of my department, but investigator Kilby with the sheriff's office is currently in the middle of the Virginia Department of Forensic Sciences statewide forensic academy. They select, um, a few, a handful of different law enforcement officers across the state, um, each spring and each fall to go. So he is one of the ones that was selected. If you haven't been to the CID building, I encourage you to go. They have turned the old dispatch room into a different evidence photography and staging area so that they can take, um, better pictures. Quite frankly, they've got, it's got better lighting, it's got flat surfaces, and they have all of their boxes and bags and tapes and everything are all stored in there. Um, the back rooms, a lot of those are used for evidence storage. Um, it is really a very, um, professional operation. And it's one that I think us, that investigator Kilby, when he comes back, will really have learned a lot and be able to implement a lot. Um, and I'm not even sure who the last person from Madison County going to be to do our academy was. So it's, it's been quite some time. Um, sheriff's office is really excited. I'm really excited. I think it's a really wonderful thing for everyone in Madison County, um, to do. And so I just, I don't mean to steal Eric's thunder, but I'm just so excited about it. And I think that it's something that he needs to get credit for supporting. And I think that y'all even supported by the majority investigator for me going. I really appreciate that. Um, there will be some pickups with the body worn camera deployment. We just don't quite know what they are yet. Um, you know, we, we had a video sent to us for, um, DUI trial, and Wade had to download it at the house, his house, to get it through, um, in the office. So we're still trying to figure out if that's a one-time thing or if that's going to be a long-term thing. Obviously, I know Bruce has a lot to do, and I'm not going to harass him with the little things if I can avoid it. Um, but that's just things that we're working on. Um, we're not talking, that one that you're still going in?
Question from the third, Ms. Law?
Well, we're busy, uh, and as close as that, we're still working with jury trials. One of the things I've asked for, and another thing with the CARE Act is our projector. Since you all approved this with the body cams, Corissa, it's, the projector's not going to work. It's not yet. It will not work.
It literally won't show.
So the, um, the, uh, polycom equipment that I work asked for, which I originally thought was going to be close to $20,000 after talking to the judge, talking to Corissa, we've just kind of decided to make it a mobile polycom. So that came in $11,000. So the projector's, um, coming in $9,000. So maybe $200 over that, originally $20,000, but it is for something a little bit different. Um, we're doing a lot of marriage licenses that are for people coming from Northern Virginia. And I think it's because of those court offices are only taking marriage licenses by appointments. And so we've only done close to 10 or 15 that are coming from Loudoun. They, the, the people of Loudoun kind of told us that if they want a marriage license, they're going to have to be. So they can do this. And what we're trying to do is. For refinancing, if your interest rate is high, go refinance again.
Question from Ms. Law? Let me send it.
Well, we've been talking about working today with hardware, how to get to. Yeah. Uh, same thing with getting electricians in with you know, one month, so we get them ready for all that stuff and equipment. What Corissa was talking to, maybe when we get that VPN in the CID building, then that will, that's going to increase their network speed by at least two thirds. So you may be able to have a. And sheriff's phone system, that's, that's going to take a bit of time, and I predict that all ready culture going at. And we're going to can't just get the SIM cards for the, uh, the access points for the body cams. Sheriff's office, which have been in short with no proof. Uh, one more. Every day, I'm always fired.
Come on.
Moving right along. As you know, Gray EMS has started up the last two full quarters. I did interviews today, I have interviews again on the 30th. A lot, a lot of good candidates, I think that will. Other than that, people are healthy, using good, good supply.
Question from the other, Ron?
Um, one update on the CARE Act purchase console will be installed on the 26th of October. Uh, I have worked all weekend trying to unravel the excess of 20 years of infrastructure. It's become that constant. Uh, I continue to do that, I'm working on it today. Uh, my plan is to have that completely shaved down and whatever older structure that we do there, by the 26th, make that one swing. Uh, my goal is to take two consoles out for 20 days, but the week is wired for this. And then Watson comes in on Monday and starts installing new ones. The Non-Home Services Board approved us for an additional firewall for our next-gen grant. Uh, AT&amp;T came back to us about three months ago in the middle of COVID and said we need an additional firewall. I formed that original grant. Uh, they approved it last Wednesday. Uh, I'm going to get with MJ tomorrow to add the additional $22,080 and 68 cents of the. Fifty-four cents to. Uh, they add that to that grant total, and Wade did that thing for potentially like, that's a next-gen thing. So even with our non-home system being upgraded this month, it doesn't affect that. They stay the same, we're going to buy the PZ net February 8th. Um, I've learned anything in the last eight months, the deadline will stay right now. Shoot. And beyond that, uh, still trying to walk through these lease agreements with, with the radio system to get the force light nailed down, first through the, the shake. Uh, and then we'll be off running on that.
Question, Ron? Carpenter, what's planned, Commissioner?
Well, let's see, um, at our last workshop, we had, uh, update from Faye's, kind of keeping us, update on what the state is doing with the solar, smart scale solar. State's slow time, few things to encourage that kind of construction. Uh, we had a kind of a heads up on the cell tower application coming in pretty soon for the new location. There was, uh, some, a suggestion and approval of the idea of the county getting some, uh, little roadside signs to place where there are locations that are going to have a special use for that application. Kind of on a voluntary basis. Uh, there was a minor amendment to the planning permission bylaws to deal with, uh, how we incorporate written comments that will not be read at the. That we put in the minutes according to Arthur and Dave, but they will be read at the.
This point.
There was widespread agreement on that. Now you're hurting my feelings. And the, the last thing we, uh, proposed amendments, which is already changed, related to the R3, zoning ordinance should be ready for further comment and, uh, the presentation for the board next week.
Thank you, Carpenter. Uh, Ron? Uh, we did the, started the, uh, social services door project yesterday. We got that in, they, they came back, come back today and do the trim, get that all fixed up. We still have to come back, there's a bunch coming now of Roma, I think, with the door opener, the handicap door opener on the corner. Um, also we're doing the HVAC work at the Moore building. Uh, that's part of the electric, so we replaced four units at the Moore building. Started that yesterday. Uh, get a look who was in the grass field. Oh, you hit your steps on the table, basically. Yes. All right, you got anything else? I think it's, but it would disinfect all the debris, you can back all the debris, so. Good. So we still got a lot of trash rolling in out there? Still got a lot of trash roll, rolling in out of there?
I really don't think it's, it's as much trash as.
Slowed down? Um, yeah, and the, um, I did, I did do another tour Monday with, uh, um, contractors in these two, these, the 14 and 414. Uh, I guess probably had sixteen people. Uh, did hear somebody says it, uh, Sub said that he had had six invitations to bid, so hopefully we're going to be six more bids coming in. Right. So what I got?
Very chilling.
Uh, yes. Yes, we had somebody that couldn't make the first two, we asked for a dollar, so we had to open it up for everybody, so that's pretty much the way that was. Questions should be turned in today, they're going, should be answered by the mall, mall pride. The bid will be open next Wednesday. Two o'clock. Anything else? That in here, Jack? Not sure.
Um, pretty much more of the same. We've been chasing that virus since early spring. Phase one, phase two, now we're in phase three, and, uh, I, I don't see us leaving phase three for quite a while. Especially since, uh, kids are, someone going back to school, your college went back. Uh, even though the numbers are trending down, there's a lot of chatter about they'll even back up. To be expected some. But even with that said, same, same story as last month, we're, we're solid in Madison on PPE. Uh, the balls that they're getting there handling safely. Much credit goes to Noah and his staff for, for just getting ahead of the eight ball, way ahead. I, I looked at some of these other jurisdictions and, and they're struggling to get PPE, but he's got his back to her. And so there are a lot of, it's a lot of good stuff on the front end of that. Um, instead of, uh, media, share guidance, everybody looks at that probably every day, almost like the sports page now anymore about like, what are the numbers? What's the guidance and what they telling us? It, it goes all over. So I, I talk with Ms. Hanner almost at least every other day about, you can be assured that the virus is here in Madison. Uh, we do that, people in quarantine. And they're taking all the proper steps. They're doing, they're trying to take every step that VDH and, uh, CDC, uh, has given us. They really are being gone. So called experts on this. That's where we're at. Also, just, uh, worked out with Ms. I had the other day, we're going to have free flu shots at the firehouse. First, it'd be a drive-through type thing. So I think she said she's going to have one underneath. Show up. Other than that, all I got, that question.
Carpenter, what? Yeah, on Mondays at 5:00, we do a conference call, Social Services.
Yeah, we're on Mondays at five, we do a conference call, social services, Sheriff. Uh, rescue on both sides, fire, emergency services, John runs the show off night. The meetings have gone down to like five times. These people are doing a great job protecting us. Speaks very well, who we've gotten going. And they, they, they're not issues, they're all on the same page, it's just very easy to see them, so thank you for doing that.
The only other thing I would say, uh, is, is last meeting was that there was a lot of con words directed toward me. And I gotta tell you that everybody in this back row right here is contributed immensely. I just can't tell you enough how, you know, it's a teamwork. I mean, everybody's contributing, so. Just wanna make that public.
Good job. All right, moving on. Tracy, what else have you been doing?
Well, one love grant, we have lots of ads going, um, and it meanders going for another tourism grant as well. So we have itinerary seen done to show that we have open spaces, safe spaces. Um, that was last night, yeah. And I thought it was done, thank you. Um, and also, um, Clark Securities, they're getting to the old New Two Building, which was, they're painting it next to Rehacks. That's new, we've got a couple leads. I still can't announce yet for the, um, Alexis Building, also the Luster property has something going in there too, the old Jim Parker building. And working on, um, Quad Summit, Business Summit for, it is Savannah, Green, Orange. One other one, so they have to change the name, but they're adding us to it, but that's gonna be good help for a lot of businesses too. Some going as a guest in November, maybe part of it next year.
You usually wanna call it.
What? Oh, can I not tell you? This is.
Obviously not, no, let's hear. All right.
Supposedly it's been taking, it's gonna be taken over in October. Changing hands.
All right, that's so.
To actually.
All right. When, when, when will we go walk in there and walk out like?
I don't know, but I'll check with the new, um, owner of that.
Making progress, same owner?
Same plan, different owner.
It's gonna be great, I'm excited, been for forty years. Um, all right, um, I'm missing MJ. Who we got?
Who, what's on my plate? Something's been on my plate for the last month now. Um, I'm a part-time bill payer now. The job description, I recall you saying you wanted somebody in place on the center post, is there something?
I don't remember something.
So, um, I would like to have a draft job description done by the end of this week. I have some, I have defined my ideas about what I want, and I have a pretty good idea of what I want now in that job. And, um, and I have to say, um, and just losing a person in that job has actually been helpful to me in some ways because I've worked through all the things that I typically don't deal with. And it's given me some ideas about both what we need to do for the ERP system and also what we need to scale.
Oh, I mean, of course.
So if I don't get back to you on that, I can tell you right now, that's what I'm gonna ask for right now is, um, when you hire the new person, that we keep the part-time person on, on, on staff that we've been using and use her as part of, um, our, as part of our, um.
Implementation.
Conversion team.
You say, you say December first was the deadline?
Well, I get heard.
Uh, it don't matter, are you thinking if you get a job description by the end, will we, will we advertise for like twelve, twelve?
Yeah, well, I would like to get it, so it needs to be, one of the questions is, who here wants to look at the job description? You obviously, I know John doesn't, uh, so I mean, if we can limit it to a couple people and be faster, it makes sense for party to do that.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Party connection. So, uh, I get, I get guys' job descriptions, I can get it, you know, we can get something final and advertised as close as possible to, to October. Yeah, and generally we advertise for a month and then you got between, I think that's around the same timetable that we, we started working on. For last year, we're trying to have a group, so between the holidays, sort of trying to get people's schedules.
Well, we may be.
Twelve one is gonna be a little tough, but I, but I, I think that that it's a plan to, we should try to get that thing advertised as close as possible. And we should have that. And that is, I, I have to say that to me right now, that it's more important than getting all these documents done on all these. Here it is. Um, other than that, um.
Yeah, we just wanna get you help as soon as possible.
I don't enjoy paying bills on Saturday, which is what I do this week. So, um.
It's like Saturday.
Um, I know that there's this budget workshop on the seventh. I've been asked to do a number of things related to that, those are which I think I could probably do, I, I'm gonna have a problem with this, uh, with a deadline before that on September third. As I tried to work through my numbers, every, and this is a generally a good thing to do. When you get involved in anything like a large capital project, um, it's always good to, at the same time that you do that, to figure out, what's my spend in the future in front of the related to doing this, you know, all my maintenance and all that kind of stuff. Um, everything that I worked on, I've done that. I've done it with the ERP project, I did it with the body cameras, there's a lot of other stuff that was, was done where we don't have that all pieced together yet. Um, you know, I, my advice to the board is that's important enough to, to your planning purposes, that if you need another workshop to do it, you know, get the numbers right, because at this point in time, to do that work now, you've got a big piece of your budget done for when you walk into the budget survey. We're close enough to budget seating that we can do something. Maybe we'll get the numbers.
Being able to do this meeting more than planning meeting, uh, a couple hours before, uh, is kind of convenient, I hope for everybody. We have to do it over, and that's, that's big issue to talk.
Okay, so that definitely, I mean, I am, I am, um, I actually kind of have some things done already related to requests. Biggest issue I'm gonna have is trying to figure out the five year impact or even the, the rest of the operating, the rest of FY twenty one impact on some of the things that have been done in like EMS, Sheriff's. Because I have to work through all these things and I have to talk to people. It's not like I can just sit at my desk and. So I, I will be working on that. Um, I don't know if I can get everything done by September thirtieth, but I think I can probably get it done by the end of next year. I would like to take off, um, partly Friday and Monday because I. But so, uh, that, that's where I am on this, so, uh, other than that, I think between what, um, I've talked about already and what I'm gonna talk about on this ERP project, you're gonna know what I, where I spent most of my time in the last month. Cause I've spent a great deal of time working this. I'm not just taking numbers from, I think I can, I'm just taking them, I think it has rounds and rounds and rounds of, of. And that, and we were doing that up till about noon today.
Good.
That's why you get the number for it.
Question for MJ? All right. Don't think I missed anybody. Uh, moving on, um, Mr. Greg, tell us about the renewal of continuity of government order.
Um, we are waiting for some additional insight from our governor. Um, as soon as we have it, we'll be ready for that, I think that is due in November, if I'm not mistaken. How would I anticipate we would have the renewal motions? Again, depending on, uh, you know, what we see out Richmond, we should have, we could have that at our next meeting, if not the meeting after that. But government will continue.
I agree.
Last one on this is that back on May twelfth, the board adopted a continuity of government ordinance that we have, of course. And the idea at the time was we're gonna have a hearing on this, so, so, um, just wanna give you a heads up, that's in the works. Um, there have been some changes to the state code, legislatures and sessions from. Um, what I mainly just forgot to say is, at this point, uh, we're just gonna see, we're gonna see when we have this on the post, but. I'm ready to find out, for example, if you've got the electronic, you know, equipment, I think it's the first time I've seen.
Seems to be working fairly easy. Amber's voted on a bunch of stuff, all eyes so far. Um, all right, good. Any questions on this? So technically, Jack, we have until November twelfth because it's six months from May twelfth, but we'll do it a couple weeks early just to put it to bed. Okay. Oh, I have another hearing? You gotta advertise? Oh, okay.
But sitting here, I believe we don't have to have a patent.
All right, whatever, I get it.
We got, we got enough time.
Right. Um, MJ.
So it looks like my careful analysis that I.
Sheriff's.
Gave you, um, so a version that I have to, to break this PDF version, says I need a hard copy, but somebody then, you, you got to write a bar or your. Cause I can't use the PDF. Or one, the PDF copy.
Great detail.
The PDF copy did, um.
All right. There you go.
I'm having problems. Um, so let me preface this by saying that the state has imposed new reporting requirements on us. Or I have to do this luminous, well, I have to do a pretty detailed report for them, um, at the end of every quarter. They gave us, for the June thirtieth, they gave us like seven days notice right before, um, Labor Day. And, uh, they, the September thirtieth report is due on October fifth. So what you have to do is you have to give that a detailed, a detailed analysis in not these categories, but in a different set of categories, on everything that's been spent and everything that's committed. So originally, when I did this, um, I think Jack had asked me to put together, you know, some detailed analysis on, on something related to that as of right now, I have to say, I, I could not get that done. I, I just, I mean, that's my work with it right now. So what I did for you is I tried to take what the last version you saw of this report and run through all the changes that I know about so far, um, the, the neutralists. And I tried to make everything that I changed, um, in red. So I know, you know, it's talking, the one thing, one thing I don't know about is I know there's a change in the twenty thousand dollar, per twenty thousand dollar number. I don't know what that is. Um, on the C S cards, we actually have a bill, so I know that that number is less than the thirty five hundred. Same with Ryan's, uh, claw chairs, we have a bill, so I know what that number is. Um, downing down to one week two, um, the touchless plumbing for food, it's fourteen and fifteen. I took that out of this analysis because you, you can pay for that if that proceeds and those, almost a hundred percent guaranteed, that will not be done by water. I think we need to be careful, next, I don't have enough money right now if you look at, the reason I took it out is we can't, we can't pay everything on the schedule right now. So I took that out because we have another plumbing source for it, and I also don't think it's gonna be done by culture. I, the same, the reasons aren't totally in any way, that's audio visual stuff could be done by culture. Um, because they can't, because the work in this room won't be done by culture and they can't stop it. So there's not a, there's not a.
That's not why I'm reading this on the ground, that's not.
I think it's aggressive to do something like that, especially if you're buying it and it's not through us, but that's what I would say. But, um, on the computer and software with advanced audio visual, we got, we got a good number of numbers higher. Um, on the ERP, you're gonna see this, I, the numbers have changed from the, from the original presentation that I put together. And if we can do it, I'm asking for another sixty six thousand dollars, go through that analysis for the session. Um, the economic development in tourism, I took the hundred and fifty and it was down in, um, you know, penting, but according to what Tracy told me, um, they, they, they have worked through on this, all the numbers, and now what they're doing is going back to organizations that made inquiries that never handed in their papers. So she's pretty confident that she's gonna do the whole one. On the school computers, the, the number on here included the FY twenty portion, so I took that out. Um, the laptops for the mobile pad, that's, that's part of that, that new grant that you just appropriated to show, the eighteen one thirty. So is the six thousand nine, so is the fifteen thousand, so they come out of your Peter's pocket, you now have another pot of money spent on that stuff on. Um, the body camera stuff, I, I, there's twenty two, six, seventy nine here, last analysis I did said that you could, you could spend seventy two over seven. So those change, there are the changes, I mean, and for all those changes, now, I have to point out one thing on here is, some of this stuff, the next step I have to do is, um, of all these things that have been approved, where are we on procurement on all of these things? I do not necessarily have that answer, but, um, I will by the end of this week. So, because that's part of what I have to re-look to the state, right, it's, I need to know whether we don't have the. Um, so, so if you look at the, the, you know, the, the things you've approved, not necessarily the data items, uh, the revised number is two million and eighteen, that leaves you with a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars of careers money that you can, that you have to spend. So I kind of tiered this and I, I said, well, I think you're still interested in getting money to these outside organizations. And after you work through those numbers, there's only eighty five hundred dollars left. Then you get that, then you get down into all the things that EMS, the extras that EMS, ESC were last, there is enough money to pay them. Just a little. Um, on the, I can talk to you a little bit about the outside organizations, I, I had made some progress, not. On four H, I have talked to Jeremy Stanford, um, apparently a lot of, and I, and he has sent me a lot of documentation that I haven't looked at, but a lot of families have taken the position that they can provide economic support to, um, to nonprofits that have been directly harmed by four H. And the four H camp is, they can't operate in their normal way because of all the so- social distancing requirements. So they had, they had, you know, they had an operating expense structure and, but they don't have the kids coming in to pay for it. And, and that actually is the same exact problem, which I didn't totally understand, that Madison Learning Center does. So I'm trying to come up with a way and I don't, I, I need to look at some more things before I know whether we can give that money or not. But he's basically asking, you know, he's giving me his budget, he said he can support any line of this. It's just, it's just we need to figure out how to do that in a clear supply. Hundred twenty five, I think we need to have as well, right? Madison Learning Center, they would like to keep every access for the equipment and the washer and dryer. Um, my conversations with, with both Francis Stacy and with the executive director, we need to believe that they would much, they're in much more need of operating support than they are an HVAC, a new HVAC. And I did not understand this, but part, what their problem is, is that they have, they have, um, it's because of all of the requirements that the safest law on them, they have experienced, um, extremely reduced capacity, but they're operating basically. It, it's not that they don't have, they have a waitlist, but because of the social distancing requirements, they can't, they can't, um, handle their normal childcare.
But monies for that sort of situation are not justified.
So I don't know about that, I don't know about that, I think if you can. I think if you can directly link it to, um, to, to, um, something that's a result of, um, you know, social distancing requirements, I'm not so sure about that. But I, I wanna do some more, because, because that is the exact argument that this 4H camp has used and they've gotten money from lots of different localities. So I, I would like to look at it a little bit more. And I, and I, as I said, I'm a scavenger, I have some, I have some documents from some other localities that have done this. So.
Can I, can I add a sentence to what Jim Day's talking about? It's not just the social distancing, it's the CDC guidelines, the Virginia Department of Health guidelines, and the government's guidelines. For example, children three and under, there can only be 12 in a group. So we can only take 10 children, whereas a year ago, we could put up to 15 children in a class. So it's, it's very many levels of why we are in the financial situation. We, a lot of it is due to these requirements that are being put on us now by the, by a few different agencies.
Awesome.
So we've taken out the 18,000 from the AC HX, so we're taking that out.
Well, we're, we're looking at potentially coming out with a different, a different rationale for giving them that money. That they definitely choose. Apparently, it's pretty hard to, for them to replace a single HVAC unit with.
That could possibly be done, but the need is stronger for, um, operating expenses. Which we need to be done other places. I would love to find out if it could be done for us. The 18,000 figure originally came when we asked for tuition assistance reimbursement. I calculated it on how many children and how many families we were helping between when we made the application to the end of the year. It came up to be 18,000 dollars. And then at one meeting, um, it was explained that's not how we could use it. So then it was welcomed and you kind of just, you know, off the fly, and we use it for HVAC. So of course, I, you know, we need some replaced, but, but that's where that 18 came from.
They're asking for a total of 13,000, what, 13,000 or something?
They haven't really asked for, they haven't really asked for that. I just, I.
I mean, we're down, the, the problem, I mean, make this long for short. I mean, we reimburse everybody here on the outside organization for them to 85,92.
Yeah, and, and.
And, and then we're not doing anything for this one bus. Um, social services, I assume they're still, haven't gotten us anything back. Then we've got the mass casualty trailer, the critical care class reimbursement, um, the advanced life support, the Lucas chest compression, and then we don't know about the extra transfer of things.
Yeah, and, and one of the things I thought about the other day is the DMV situation.
The problem with DMV though is a state problem. Less than 50% of the DMVs in the state of Virginia are appropriate. The reason that Madison's getting slammed is because.
Because everybody else closed.
Everybody else is closed. They, at their meetings, they're reporting multiple times. People are driving three and four hours to come, and now they're only by appointment. Um, it's just an absolute nightmare for us, but on state of Virginia. Um, I mean, we're, I mean, we're giving, in, yeah, where is that?
What?
The town of Madison.
They're gonna cut 4,700 bucks right now.
Um, and that's.
So, I mean, so the town of Madison, um, I, I guess the way it was originally approved back in, somebody talked to them in June, and they thought they had it from like March to June for bills. But the truth matter is, is that the town has the right, more so than anybody else. The town has the right to request, I mean, we were supposed to honor, this, this money is supposed to be given to towns to the extent that they can, at least one of the priorities is that they can justify it. So, so she, I, I talked to Madison yesterday, and, um, they have no interest in, um, extra money for DMV hours. It's a staffing issue. They don't want to do it. Um, they aren't interested in overtime, they aren't interested in extra hours. Uh, it's, it's a personnel issue, I think. There's two things that she, she is interested in, well, in addition to the request that she made in June. They have, they have done some additional IT work that she believes is reimbursable. And there's two other things that she thinks that could, could potentially make a, make a cares argument for. One is a door replacement similar to like what Social Services is doing. It would actually, um, be like a touchless delivery. Well, their door isn't, isn't, uh, ADA compliant right now, so we may be putting in an ADA compliant door.
No, but also there's an ADA requirement.
Wow.
There is a requirement of ADA.
Well, okay, I don't know what they're thinking. But, but the, sorry, they, they had asked for a replacement door, which if it was, you know, something that was like press a button and it opens, you could potentially make that argument. And they also have asked for a security system so they can look out the apartment lock because right now they're keeping their doors locked, you know, they can't see, they have to go out and bring people in. So they're, so they said there are some, you know.
Well, the, the problem that I'm, where I'm at here is that using it for the town is fine. Um, this flow of money is about to go away. We're down to.
About one month.
But we're down, and I mean, this is absolutely crazy. I mean, we went to 2,300, or 2,314,000 dollars, we're down to 85,92. I mean, we're just, I mean, we're gonna get to a point here that we just gotta, it's about to end.
So I, I think some of these backlogs of these outside, I think, stand in the bottom of the squad. So I, I think like, for instance, BAC, I think they, they think they have.
He's been sitting here for three hours.
So I think, I think that they, they believe that they have, and I, you know, they, they have not hard numbers of what they want. So I think that's a legitimate.
The.
Um, yeah, you can do, there, there's a whole lot to, um, play around with in, in, in these numbers.
But what's gonna actually play out?
Well, you've just approved the 125, so there's not, there's just not much left that you.
I mean, the, the 5,000, 5,000 for BAC, I don't really have a hard count. Um, the reimbursing the rescue squad volunteers for the PPE, I think that's appropriate. Town Madison, appropriate. Um. We've already done the small business recovery grants, so we need to figure out about this early learning center. And the early learning center, whether or not they can use some of that money to operate under, uh, uh, yeah. I mean, essentially, we're given 33,000 dollars. So are we going ahead and approving the, the first one there, number 122, the 11,942?
I think that they have already spent some of that money.
There you go. And then the washer, dryer, I can see that being COVID related. The HVAC system is not COVID related.
Well, I mean, a lot of people are replacing HVAC systems, but I, I think the bigger issue is, is that if you ask them what they want, they don't really want a new HVAC system, they want operating support. So I mean, if we can find a way to give it to them, I think that's what we should do.
I would certainly agree with that. The 11,9, I would think, is all that been spent, Miss Lacy, for PPE stuff?
It's for, um, we had to buy desks and chairs for our school age kids. We have upwards of, I think it's 18 every Wednesday. So we bought desks and chairs so they could be appropriately integrated. Um, our costs on paper towels, soap, et cetera, et cetera, through synthesis doubled even though our number of children has, so it's, it's for those kinds of things. It's I, what I voted up to.
So if you're looking for more money, um, potentially where I would say you kind of have some cushion of flexibility on in your approval list is, I did add 66,000 dollars to ERP. But if, I mean, if.
Or you have to have a decision.
Do you use care's money or use fund downs? There are choices. The number is gonna change on that one. So, but, but the, um, the other thing is you've got a 40,000 dollar allowance here for, um, like purchasing of like 720 and stuff like that. But, but in fact, we are, I mean, and it's not just through Rogers Department. We are actually, department heads are still buying that stuff and they're still charging it to here. So you need some kind of money in the budget for that, but you may have a little bit of. So what I might suggest is, you know, that as of September, um, you know, if we reflect, um, look at where you are on the list of September, and then maybe, maybe we can come up with an extra 10, 15,000 dollars out of that number. And you can also, I mean, you can take money out of the ERP system, but, um, like I said, that, that number is, you know, it's there and it's not going away. So if you don't use care's money for it, you have to, you have to do your own thing.
Let me ask a question. Like, on, on the first page, down 106 EMS, we've got EMS building physical distancing improvement, $7,000 under contract. So we have a contract with somebody for exactly 7,000 dollars.
They have a bill.
For exactly 7,000 dollars.
He wants to get paid.
For exactly 7,000 dollars. Okay, how many of these others, so next one, uh, batteries, 4,000 bucks. My point is, we're, we're marching down this road, this is, uh, you know, September 22nd. We're marching down the road, and how many of these items on this list are gonna come in at those numbers?
So you'd be, so some of these are real.
So the thing, the items that we can.
Right.
Items for, you know, something specific.
Right.
We should, those things probably should, should either be, uh, gotten right away so we get the PO and the, and the requisition and all that kind of stuff. We know exactly what it's gonna be, because in my career, I don't know, that I rarely order something that doesn't come back in and it's not exactly that amount. So, so there's gotta be an order to this so that we end up spending it at the end. So when you get to December 15th, it better be, I'm gonna go get a widget off the shelf and buy it today that's cares related, because we won't have time to do another contract.
Okay, so this gets back to what I was talking about in the beginning is that I have a, a report due to the state on October 5th through 9/30 that has to account for obligated funds, which means purchase orders. So, so within, within the next two to three days, I'm gonna have your numbers. Or at least what I'm gonna have is, if I don't have a purchase order, I'm gonna go tell the department head, you need to go get a purchase order. I, I do not have all that lined up yet. I don't have a complete account of that, but I'm not very far away from that.
We need another true up, and that's really what we're gonna have in the next, at our next meeting. And then we can try to figure out where to go, the one that's, we're down to the bottom dollar. And we know that there's a couple items that Miss Lacy at the early learning center, like, need to figure out if that's even permissible, um, and then we move forward with some of it.
Yeah, I had to do this report last week for Skyline, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we haven't gotten this stuff on order yet, and how do they know whether we do or not, or not? So I, you know, they called me up on the phone when I sent the report. You don't, you haven't got this all spent? No. When do I have to spend it by? Oh, the end of the year. Okay, well, I got plenty of time here.
Do you have it sent to the department accounts?
Uh? No.
Okay.
I'm sending it to the state, uh, B H D A.
We have somebody from the Virginia Department of Accounts who's reporting, she's collating all this information from all the localities, rolling it up and reporting it to the federal government.
Right. So how much?
And I must report dollars spent and dollars obligated as of 9/30. So by 9/30, I will have all these numbers.
The stuff that you have a PO cut for out of, out of four pages of line items. How much of the stuff you have a PO cut?
Harvey, this sort of stuff, I think, you have.
You think?
I don't know a lot. Yeah, no, I mean, I think you have purchase orders for a lot of this stuff.
Could be wrong. There, there's still gonna be, your point is what it is, is there's still gonna be excess money. There is, I think, very rarely, other than this, this one thing for 7,000 bucks, um, I, I never think these.
I agree with you on that.
I agree with you on that. We're gonna have some extra money left there. Figure out if we can get some of this, we've committed to the 125, we've committed to, I'm fine with the 5,000 for PC and BAC app. Um, sounds like it's a good thing, helps a lot of people. Um, I mean, what we're getting up here is, Jerry, I mean, it seems like we're kind of making, we've made a good progress.
We did it to, we did it to rescue squad, I think. Um, and, and that's, the town of Madison has not made, I had told the town of Madison that they need to make another request, so. Huh?
Where'd you go?
I mean, what I asked her to do is to give us a budget. Here, you know, take what you already asked for, take what you wanna spend, give us a total and ask for it all at one time. Um, I, I had a detailed conversation with her. She, I think that she needs to work with the mayor to get this done. But I think that she's going to have something back to us. So she, she's coming up with a revised request. So we're really down to the 4H center and the learning center. That's really, that's all that's left here. Now, in terms of the requests that were made from EMS at the last meeting, um, not all of them, but it goes back to what I was saying before is, go back to my capital budget. You've got 200, 250,000 dollars that you're not gonna need in your capital budget to, um, because you use, you replaced it with cares money. So potentially, you could buy some of this stuff with that, but if you do that, then I need another, then I, I'm gonna need money out of fund downs to take with the ERP. And just make sure to pay with that, that's mine too. Is that a route you wanna take along?
I'm with you, but if we start going into county taxpayers' pockets directly, mass casualty trailer. Sorry, Noah, he's coming off of this for me. Um, I, I, sorry, sorry, uh, Josh here. Um, and I, I know, I know, I, it's a horrible, it's annoying a lot of people. I, I just, I mean, it's just, it's just, I just don't see it. I mean, the two days there.
I gotta say, from a, from a big picture point of view, um, the amount of cares money that we've put into EMS.
Is massive.
Yeah, it's massive, and, and, um, it's approaching the point where an auditor is gonna look at it and say, is this necessary?
It is massive.
You're at the, you're at the justification of, is it necessary? And, um, I mean, you might be able to make a tangential argument that it can be related to cares, but when you start spending seven, you know, when you start spending half your cares allocation in one department, or like a county that really doesn't have a significant problem with COVID right now. Um, I, I, I think you may need to be careful about doing that. I think it's a, 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 a more cautious approach to kind of spread out your.
All right, we've been talking about this for enough, we're not getting anywhere. Everything in yellow in the last page, if you hear me, is pending at this point. The other one that I think is pending at this point to some of the money pertaining to the learning center. Figure out what we can do and what we can't do. Everybody else, I don't think there's a problem with it. That apply to all.
Yeah, that's right.
Goodness, oh. Um, that's where we're at right now. Get off. Further comments? Okay. Report next minute. I'm sure we're gonna do this.
I can actually give this to you at that October 6th budget.
See where we're at. All right, anything further on this? The other new business, or any other old business? The other new business? Information and correspondence?
Uh, we have the, the.
Hello?
That is an enthusiastic group.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, we are not.
I'm telling you, we are not.
Swingers.
We're not tearing out. Off.
Right now, we're waiting for, we have to get back to this. One issue that we do need to assess through is, um, is the suggestion that the funding for this comes from secondary money. There's a chance it could come from Bridge Pot.
Bridge Pot? Okay. Yeah, I don't know.
I've got, let me. Apparently at the serious store, there is a petition.
Yeah?
Yeah, there you go. Basically getting called. Swinging bridges. They can protect it in mass. Um, all right, anything else? Public comment? Public comment? Are you standing up because you're ready to make public comments, sir?
Sir, I'm just, I need, I need other requests.
Amber has stuck with us the whole time, she's been voting aye. She agrees with the first one, so we got these things going. Good job. Anything on the B M O, on the public comment? You can hear us on here. Public comment?
No chat.
It's real unfortunate. We really haven't had a whole lot of public comment, other than Mad Cats. I think Mad Cats made a little presentation on this one, then. See, more of a hand representative in the way. All right, we do have a closed session tonight. Thank you.
We will be the fourth meeting in closed session pursuant to the January 12th, section 2.2, dash 37, section 8.29, for discussion of the terms of the scope of public contracts and voluntary expenditure of public funds, or discussion of concession that affords the effective party's position of negotiating strategy of all related negotiations with A, financials, software offenders, and two, Madison campus.
Second.
Main section, further discussion. A lot of papers, six bucks, and aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session, thank you all very much for sticking with us.